Ms. Marshall, welcome.
Mrs. Denny? Mrs. Essler? Mrs. Hilperdy? Mrs. Jones? Mrs. Powell? Mr. Seesaw? Mrs. Stone? Mr. Tinsley? Mr. Armour?
2.01 is approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes in a regular meeting of April 24th, 2019. Who has motion? Questions, comments? All those in favor? Also second motion to approve the minutes in a special board meeting of May 15, 2019. Questions, comments? All those in favor? Close? 2.02 is the voice listing. Motion to approve the voice listing for April, May, 2019. Who has motion? Questions, comments? All those in favor? Close? 2.03 means the charge.
As of March 31st, 2019, Pendelco's balance was 32,881,767. During April 2019, local state and pedal revenues totaled 1,499,109. Disbursements were issued in the amount of 3,575,357. As of April 30th, 2019, Pendelco's current balance is 30,805,519. The motion is to approve the treasurer's report for April 2019. Do I have this motion?
Questions, comments? All those in favor? Close? Motion passes. 2.04 is the budget transfer report. Motion to approve budget transfer report for April through May, 2019. Who has this motion? Questions, comments? All those in favor? Close? Number three on the agenda is student staff recognition. I'll turn it over to Dr. Stock.
Thank you, Mr. Armour. Good evening to everybody in attendance tonight. Each year, our May school board meeting comes and even added a more special event as we take a moment to recognize student accomplishments and our staff retirees. And this year is no exception. Our board has gone for a moment here, hit pause on its monthly business so that we can first acknowledge some outstanding students, followed by an acknowledgement of service by many of our longtime employees who are retiring by the end of the school year. Last month, the board acknowledged athletic achievement of our Sun Valley basketball team. And in the same fashion, they have requested that we follow that up with the acknowledgement of our Sun Valley Bachi team. A team that has exceeded expectations every year in their existence and who represent the very best of the character, commitment, and athleticism that we hope to see from all of our sports. In just a second, Ms. Emerson, Sun Valley High School Assistant Principal and an administrator who has been really integral in getting the Bachi team in place, just to be your fact, will say a few words about this tremendous team, their great coaches, and fill you in on some of their incredible accomplishments that make us so proud. She will call the names of the athletes and the coaches, and we will present them with a certificate and an acknowledgement as well. Following that, Ms. Murray, our supervisor curriculum, will announce the Pendelco winners of the countywide Young Authors Contest. And I was thrilled to see that our district had so many winners again this year. Very impressive. I will not steal her thunder on the data, but it is quite impressive. And then following that, supervisors and administrators of varying schools, our departments, have come out tonight to say a few words of thanks and recognition for each of our retirees who are here this evening. So without further ado, I'd like to turn this over to Ms. Emerson, and Mr. Armour and I will come down to the ground level.
Good evening, everyone. I am so honored to introduce the Unified Bachi Team from Sun Valley. About four years ago, Special Olympics came to us about partnering up to bring Bachi to Sun Valley. The Unified Bachi Team is tremendous. We have, the team is made up of students with and without disabilities. Currently, we have two teams. We probably could field more teams. It's made up of eight Special Olympic athletes and then eight partners. Each team consists of an equal amount of partners and athletes. The students practice after school twice a week and participate in five matches during the school year, including the Regional Delaware County Bachi Competition. At the regionals, the students participate in a single elimination style tournament to qualify for the state championship in Hershey, PA. Only 12 teams across the state advance to the state championship each year, where they participate in two days of competition. Our Bachi team has made it to the state championship for the last three years, being the only team in the state to achieve this. They have medaled each year in the state competition, earning third, a second, and a third place respectively. It's unbelievable to see them get their medals, but the relationships that are formed between the Special Olympic athletes and the partners is unbelievable. Our partners do, we go away, I go to Hershey with them, and it's unbelievable to see the Special Olympic athletes and their partners together hanging out, having a great time, and that's what it's all about. I'd like to introduce the athletes. We have Tehran Harris, Joey Tumalo, Dan Edling, Rashawn Ben Tyson, A.J. Gordon, Andrew Clausen, Andrew Hill, Josiah Kessler, Matt McHary, Mance Tiger, Kirsten Kirk, Simone Rafter, Sophia Belgiorno, and two of our seniors who have been a big, integral part of this are in Disney, and that would be Samantha Louise and Kira Green, who is also a school board representative, who fought really hard to have the Bachi team come and be presented tonight. So we're really happy for her. And we have three great coaches who are also our teachers, Michelle Lehman, Lauren Herbert, and Ashley Maravella, and they do a wonderful job with these guys. It's unbelievable. So it's a great, great thing, and I am super proud. The Valley is too proud of them. Thank you.
It is my great pleasure this evening to recognize our district winners in the 2019 Dr. Nicholas Bonato Young Authors Writing Project and to celebrate this accomplishment. This project is celebrating its 41st year. It is the longest running project of its kind. Students in grades one through eight in public and non-public schools submit a piece of writing of their choice. This year, over 700 entries were sent in and 97 winners were named. We are here tonight to recognize our 20 winners, more than any other district in the county. On May 9th, all of the winners joined together at Northly Middle School to celebrate. They received a certificate of recognition and a bound copy of all their winning entries. On that day, each of them were a published author. Author Judith Schachner shared her experiences with the young authors and their families. The writers can revisit a place already in progress and completed or started with a new idea. A piece must be written on their own without teacher conferencing. Published authors tell us that they find ideas in their own lives with experiences that they've had as well as the world around them. The students have to decide what they want to choose to write about and how they will make their stories stand out. Well, the students who are here with us tonight got it right. As you listen to the titles of the winning pieces, you will hear a variety of topics. I am proud to present to you the 2019 Young Author Winners. Please hold your applause until all the winners have been announced. When your name is called, please come to the front of the stage to receive your certificate and also a gift card from Barnes &amp; Noble Bookstore. In grade one, Brianna Brooks, Parkside, Marshmallow, and The Bullies. Charlie Hughes, Parkside, The Beach. Dylan Pathier, Coburn, The Case of the Missing Bird. Melissand Noblet, Coburn, Chelsea, and The Witch. In grade two, Leah Williams, Coburn, Tiggy the Tiger's Adventure. Morgan Gastangue, Pendle, A Night for the Snowman. Stay out front. Ankmar Patel, Pendle, A Snowman. In grade three, Aleah Walden, Parkside, Slav the Purple Blob. Aiden De Guzman, Aston, The Ultimate Hunt for the Missing Teacher. In grade four, Angelina Gravio, Aston, The Big Race. Rowan Ardellay, Pendle, Trapped in a Snowglobe. Maya De Lacy, Aston, Hershey Park. Madeline Kleppinger, Pendle, If I Were Trapped in a Snowglobe. In grade five, Mackenzie Burgess, Coburn, Freedom. Mackenzie, I've been seeing a lot of you lately. And our Northly Middle School winners in grade six, Rasha Magadi, A Trip to La Vizir. Emma Patterson, Back Up to the Top. Grace Hagerty, When the Sky Lights Up. In grade seven, Skylar Herman, The Light at the End of the Tunnel. Maren McGinley, I Want to Meet You. Maren very much wanted to be here, but she is representing her volleyball team in their championship game this evening. And in grade eight, Julian Deal, Out of Sight. When asked, authors will tell you that there are many influences and experiences in his life that contributed to their success, and so it is true with our young authors. As you listen to the titles, you heard a wide variety of topics, some narrative and some informational. Parents, thank you for your support at home. Teachers, thank you for the instruction and motivation that happen every day in your classrooms. To the reading specialists, Michelle, Julie, Morgan, Deb, Michelle and Nicole, and Allison Rocchio and Heather Thompson at Northly, I thank you for all you did in your schools to support this project. An author's success in writing is also influenced by his reading. Congratulations to all of you on your achievement.
And next, we have Lisa Kiper, who I haven't seen here tonight. Is she? Hi, there's Lisa. All right. Lisa's been a very dear person to have within our department. Lisa does everything around the district here. And I don't think there's any resident that hasn't driven up and down Pendle Road at some point in time and seen Lisa walking somewhere. I've even run into her at the Walmart over in Chi. I'm like, Lisa, what are you doing over here? There's a whole long way to walk. You try and give her a ride, she doesn't want to take it. Lisa's been, you've been missed, Lisa, around the depot. I mean, Lisa was there every day, rain, sleet, or snow, she would get there, we'd pick her up, or she would walk on her own. But she's been around the district, working in the cafeteria, working in maintenance, I think even pulling security from time to time. Just an all-around Pendelco employee, and she was great with the kids. Lisa worked with our special ed kids on a number of buses. And she really enjoyed being with the kids, and the kids enjoyed being with her. And the past few months, it's been weird to come to work and not see Lisa at the depot. She usually got in shortly after I did, at zero dark 30. And we'd visit and have a joke or two. So Lisa, I just want to thank you for all your years of dedication here at Pendelco and the many areas that you've fulfilled. And know that you'll be missed here. You left an invaluable mark, not only in transportation, but in the other departments that you served in. So come on down so we can. And then we have Richard and Jocelyn Lanahan. I don't, don't, what's that? Okay. Well, I'm going to speak for them anyway because Richard and Jocelyn are a special couple, husband and wife team. They work good together, they work on the same bus. Richard was the AD, Jocelyn was the driver. And you know, as the driver, she's in charge, you know, she's the head of the bus. So that kind of fell in line with the home life, you know? What Jocelyn said, Richard did. But having a husband and wife team is a special thing, and it's something to get used to. The only drawback is, is when one of them takes off, the other one usually takes off too, so then you're down two people. But as with Michael, you know, they had other careers in their lives that they had fulfilled, and they came to Pendelco to, I guess, fulfill another part of their life, and that was working with kids, which they were very good at. And in their absence, I would just like to say that they're greatly missed too within our department, and hard shoes fulfilled. And I wish them all the best as well as with Michael and with Lisa and their endeavors and their retirement, and I would hope and pray that you enjoy it to its fullest. I just want to thank you very much.
I'd like to invite Facilities Director Brian Dotty up here to honor retirees from the Facilities Department. Thank you, Eric. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me a few words on behalf of Alan Miller. Alan was employed by Pendelco School District for a few years, 38 to be exact. I believe he was one of, if not the longest tenured employee at the time. But of interest, and probably what attracted him to Pendelco School District was that Alan was a proud graduate of Sun Valley High School, class of '78. '78 will dominate. Tracy told me to put that one in there. So Tracy Marshall, classmate of Alan, had asked me to add that. I must say that the years have been much more kind to Tracy. Alan did retire just prior to Christmas as our groundskeeper, getting us through the fall sports season without interruption. He started many moons ago as a laborer and then quickly moved up to the groundskeeper position, maintaining 14 athletic fields for the school district with a look-along. Over the years, I could always rely on Alan's efforts for the ADs, coaches, and especially student athletes in the fall and spring seasons. He did get to enjoy one football slash soccer season this past fall on the new stadium turf. Truth be known, it took him a few return trips on the mower to the synthetic turf field before he got used to the fact that he didn't have to cut. Old habits die hard. Summer and winters were not without challenges as well, particularly snow and ice season. Again, I could always rely on Alan to come in early, late, or on weekends to operate the salt spreader on the dump truck, ensuring safe parking lots and driveways. Back to mowing. Alan could often be seen testing the speed thresholds of the zero radius mower, decked down, hearing his protection on and holding on for dear life. Someone mentioned to me the other day that since Alan has retired, we now have grass over two inches high on the fields for the first time. I then reflected back on the years that I've been here and the number of items that came, became collateral damage to his cutting deck. And this is by far not an exhaustive list. So we have car keys, various balls like baseballs and lacrosse balls, the radio, and I believe that one was intentional. Birds, or at least bird feathers, I'm not quite sure there. Director of Facilities toes. And then, last but not least, a live firework ordinance from the Fourth of July, and that one did not end well. Hate to tell you about that. So Alan, I wish you all the best in retirement as a Downingtown empty nester with your wife, Marilyn, and hopefully time with Megan and Ben as well, and maybe some soccer, possibly coaching yet, concerts I know you love, and travel. Enjoy it. I would like to invite Principal Terry Ford up to recognize a retiree from Coburn.
Good evening, everyone. It is an honor to speak this evening on behalf of Michelle Basori. Michelle Basori has been employed by the Pendelco School District for 16 years as a paraprofessional. And for 16 of those years, she's been a champion for students with special needs at Coburn Elementary School. Paraprofessionals are essential to the excellent support we're able to provide for our children here in Pendelco. And I can speak firsthand to the fact that Ms. Basori is a top-notch professional. Every day, she goes above and beyond her required duties to ensure students' needs are met academically, behaviorally, and emotionally. As you can imagine, over the past 16 years, Ms. Basori formed numerous supportive and nurturing relationships with students, and as a result, has touched many lives. Famous poet Maya Angelou said, "In time, people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." The students Ms. Basori has serviced over the years will never forget how special, important, and accomplished she made them feel during their time at Coburn Elementary School. On behalf of the Pendelco School District and Coburn Elementary, thank you, Ms. Basori, for an outstanding service to our district as a paraprofessional. But more importantly, I thank you for giving so much of your heart and soul to our students because I know they will never forget your champion spirit and just how special you made them feel. Congratulations and best wishes to you and your family on a wonderful retirement.
At this time, I'd like to invite Principal Lanny Blair up to recognize a Northly retiree.
When I think about school nurses, I remind of a poster that I once saw for the seven reasons to visit. The reasons were bleeding, breathing bad, broken bones, barfing, burning up, bee stings, or big bumps. And over the past 34 years, Pendelco has been able to call and rely on this nurse. Chris Saunders has been the backbone of the nursing staff over that time. She has served students at Parkside Pendle, Green Ridge Elementary, and Northly. Nurse Saunders has been there for staff and students alike, even providing CPRs through a crossing guard in front of the administration building. Her job has also included being the district liaison, finding subs and placing nurses, which is no easy feat. It's like playing three-card monte, shuffling them all over, right? Planning professional development for school nurses, and writing, reviewing, revising district policies, just to name three. After my third year in the building, I witnessed her running up and down the hallway so many times that I bought a second wheelchair and put downstairs so that she could have a quicker response time and not wait for the elevator. I was also thinking about that. What if Fitbits actually existed when she first started over these years? How many steps would she have accumulated over that time? I can't even imagine to think how many you've stepped up and down this hallway. Chris has been here longer than me, and she's been a valued staff member for so long, and I hate to see her go. "Chris, we're going to miss you, and we wish you the best in your next chapter as NANA 911."
I'd like to invite Principal Patrick Sassy to recognize retirees from Sun Valley.
I'm honored to speak on behalf of the Sun Valley teachers, staff, and administrators, presenting Family Consumer Science Teacher Elaine Cascala and JR RTC instructor, Master Gunnery Sergeant James Pearn this evening. In her 15 years of service at Pendelco... In her fifteen years of service at Pendelco and twenty-four years of teaching overall, Mrs. Cascala is a perfect example of how creating positive teacher-student relationships can improve student success. She always creates a safe space for diverse learners. She teaches very important lifelong skills such as healthy relationships, cooking, cleaning, taking care of others, including children and babies, volunteering and being an active community member as well. Mrs. Cascala has also created a classroom that utilizes differentiated instruction, and she uses current technology, guest speakers, visual and oral learning techniques to keep her classes engaged. Outside of her teaching schedule, she has started and advised the S.C.C.L.A. Vanguard Volunteers Club and also advised the Leo Club. After years connecting with students who appear at Sun Valley, we are very sad to see Mrs. Cascala go, but are equally excited to see what she does next in her retirement. Thank you and congratulations to Mrs. Elaine Cascala. After serving thirty years and two months in the United States Marine Corps and achieving the highest enlisted rank of Master Gunner Sergeant, Jim retired in two thousand and five and two days later joined the Sun Valley team as a J.R.R.T.C. Marine Instructor. His knowledge of the Marine Corps combined with his degree in health and physical education and a love of military history created this perfect next step in his career. When Master Guns was a high school student, he became involved in the Marine Corps Youth Physical Fitness Team, which ultimately propelled him to join the Marine Corps. He not only established a fitness team here at Sun Valley where he has instilled a culture of lifelong fitness, but he has brought home countless regional and national awards. All across the country, Sun Valley's fitness team is always the team to beat. In fact, this past weekend, he just competed in his final national fitness meet with our students. This year was memorable as the girls' team took second place nationally and the boys' team won fifth overall in the nation. Master Guns was also fittingly named National Coach of the Year. Over these past fourteen years, Master Guns has also helped students develop a sense of leadership, community service, and most importantly, a sense of camaraderie among his cadets. As a patriarch of the J.R.R.T.C. family, he will be sorely missed by his extended family here at Sun Valley. Thank you and congratulations to Master Gunner Sergeant James Pearn.
I'd like to invite our business administrator, Tracy Marshall, recognize a retiree from her department.
Thank you for waiting. About fifteen years ago, I went to Chichester School District and there I met Maureen Pittner. Maureen, at the time, was the payroll specialist at Chichester. A little while later, I left Chichester and I went to Haverford. And who shows up at Haverford? The Maureen Pittner. Again, to do payroll. She left Haverford before I did, took a little rest from payroll. I left Haverford and came to Pendelco. And you guessed it, here she comes again. Once again, the payroll specialist at Pendelco. I wouldn't have had it any other way. I'm so glad that we followed each other around the county. At all three districts, she was the payroll guru. In fact, Dr. Steinbach dubbed her Payroll Pittner. Her knowledge of payroll and all of the intricacies that played is amazing. As you can imagine, no one has ever called payroll and said, "Thanks, Maureen. My check is in the bank today. Really appreciate it." But she did get those phone calls. "My check isn't right." "I don't think my check is right." "I should have been paid for this." "What happened to this day?" And Maureen, through all of that, was calm and kind and would take, I know, would take her time, talk people through it, explain to them exactly how their paycheck was figured. I saw her sit at her desk and talk to people and go line by line through their pay stuff, explaining what all of those deductions are, that when you look at the bottom, you figure out what happened to all the money that you thought you had earned. I often marvel at her patience with people. People would come in when they were going to retire and talk to her about their retirement plans. She always had time for whoever came in. These days, Maureen can be found booking her next cruise headed to Disney or just hanging out with her granddaughter, Bree. Maureen, it was a pleasure working with you. And now, I'm just so happy that we're friends. Congratulations and enjoy.
And I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Steinbach to recognize our final retiree for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kaminko. It's indeed an honor for me to say a few words in acknowledgement of our Pendelco Business Administrator and Board Secretary, Tracy Marshall. And I've attempted to keep it brief because she doesn't like attention given to herself, and I will honor that. I've often said that a superintendent is only as good and as effective as those who are around him. The school board, students and staff, and certainly myself have benefited from having the most talented, caring, conscientious, and very, very hard-working business administrator on our team. For the past decade, I have had the privilege to work with Tracy, and during those years, I never had reason to question or doubt whether the essential duties of her department were being met. As a Sun Valley grad, she came back to Pendelco to dedicate herself to working in the district where she grew up, whether it was managing food service, the budget, transportation, facilities, maintenance, board secretary duties, tax collections, payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable. I could go on and on and on. Tracy always did that with a smile on her face. And as you just saw, the folks who have worked with her in her department, they've always felt respected and they felt supported, and they saw their supervisor not so much as a boss, but as a friend. And so have I. I can't tell you how many times Tracy has been in her office and available to patiently listen to me, Ben, only to put on a very positive spin on things in the end. During her time here, Tracy has been responsible for the management of more than $575 million. We've been in far too many meetings to even count, to learn, to figure out, and plan for how to spend over $70 million worth of facility improvements for our community, and way too many financial transactions to even begin to mention. But with all that, each and every year, Pendelco always receives full and complete clean local and multi-year state audits. I think it's noteworthy that both of the assistant business managers that she worked with became, or will become, business managers themselves. As Tracy soon starts her retirement, she can reflect back upon Pendelco, knowing that her work resulted in vastly improved school facilities, vastly improved operational systems efficiencies, and vastly improved regional reputation. In the end, all of the departments that she was responsible for are better today than they were before she started here. And for that, we should all be grateful. On top of that, today is a very special day for her, so I wish her not only a happy and healthy retirement, but a happy birthday as well. Tracy Marshall, congratulations on your retirement.
Tonight's student representation to the board, one of them is in Disney and the other is involved in a major activity, so we will not have a report from the students of Sun Valley tonight. Number five will be the superintendent's report, Dr. Steinbach.
Thank you, Mr. Armbr. We have a long meeting this evening. I said I would be brief for my superintendent's report, just want to mention a few items that I want the board to be aware of. I'm happy to report that our first community forum for Ready for Light Initiative went extremely well last evening at Sun Valley. We had parents and local business officials in attendance, and our leadership team that was comprised of administrators and teachers spent several hours gathering input from the group to help us define our portrait of a graduate from Sun Valley. This was a really impressive group. No one came with a personal agenda. They appreciated the fact that we will continue to be reaching out to the community and staff and even students for input towards our strategic plan and a portrait of a graduate so that we will have that be ready for adoption later next fall. You may recall that we had an initiative and a focus this year called Positively Pendelco, which seeks to promote student and staff happiness. I learned yesterday afternoon that a second grader at Pendle, on her own, managed to get fifty signatures to petition Mr. Light to hold a special day to promote positivity at Pendle, as being planned for June 5th. And never did I think that Positively Pendelco would lead to a seven-year-old to propose Positively Pendle. So stay tuned for some more information on that event and certainly provide district-wide coverage as is necessary because I think it's just a fantastic example of the great things that our young students are doing. On the agenda this evening is the motion recommending the appointment of Ms. Nina Tyre as our next Director of Human Resources. The board had an opportunity to meet with her as well. Ms. Tyre has been a supervisor of human resources in Upper Darby, and her breadth of experience and skill is exceptional. I'm proposing her appointment with a start date the first week in August, and she's here tonight. Very happy to have her in attendance. Our kindergarten registration for next year is complete, but it really has been a unique year. Enrollment patterns are shifting a bit with a trend for larger kindergarten enrollment, particularly at Pendle. Administrators are sorting out assignments and notifications will be going out soon, much earlier than the midsummer notices that we've had in the past. As the registration papers indicate, when classrooms are filled, some students may be assigned to a sister school for kindergarten, but then assigned back to a homeschool for first through fifth grade, although we are doing our very best to minimize that, to try to keep students in their homeschools K to five. The district received compliments from the hosts of both our junior and senior prongs for Sun Valley students, who were, in their words, "One of the finest, best behaved groups that they have had." It continues to be a great year at Sun Valley, and I credit the staff and administration there for putting an exceptional climate in place that when Sun Valley students are out in the community, they are really representing Pendelco very well, and I'm grateful for that. Dr. Mark Comas, our Director of Technology, is sending out links to staff so they can access training modules for our new Skyward Student Information System. He indicated to me that we are on schedule for a conversion to our new grading, registration, and data reporting system that will be in place for the start of next full year. Finally, I want to thank the board for permitting me to attend the week-long Harvard Institute for Superintendents role this month. It was worth the time and ensures that I too am continuously making an effort to improve my skills and craft as a lifelong learner. Graduation is here in just a few weeks, June 11th. As a reminder, more information for board members will be forthcoming. Also look forward to Senior Awards Night on June 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Steinbach. Announcements to the public, in accordance with Act 48 Sunshine Law, the board met executive session this evening to discuss personnel litigation matters. Comments by members of the board? See none? Minutes for board information? We'll get public comments. They're coming up.
Oh, okay.
Okay? Thank you. There's minutes for board information. Will be none? Number 10, public comment. I can either send the mic to you or you come up to the podium and speak.
Good evening, school board members. This is going to be a tough act to follow after hearing all these wonderful stories that have happened tonight of the accomplishments of this school district, and I'm very proud of everyone who was announced. My name is Agnes Baker. I'm seventy-five years old and a lifelong resident of Aston Township. Fifty-three years on Concord Road for what I used to call the Indy 500, and twenty years in the High Point Lane. I love Aston and have recently joined the Historical Society. I had such fun looking at the old photos, and while doing so, I saw many of the older township residents pictured there. Some are going to their reward, but many are still residing in Aston, which brings me to the point of my concern. The Aston seniors need help. We all remember when Village Green and Green Ridge areas were farmlands, with most of the people residing in the Lenai, Rockdale, Beechwood, and Aston Mills sections of the township. We were the ones helping to build... We were the ones helping to build our communities with our tax dollars. That was when things were not as expensive and we were mostly working people and supporting our families. Now we are on fixed incomes, and I do mean fixed. The money we put aside for our retirement just doesn't stretch far enough. I think that you can guess where all of this is leading. Please, please, consider giving us a break on our tax, school taxes. I know that you have a budget... I know that you have a budget to meet, but we are really struggling too. It is a sad thing when a person has lived their whole life, or a great deal of their life, in their own home and have to sell and move because the place where they have lived and supported for so many years is now just too expensive to maintain. When you were younger, moving might be a big adventure, but it is not like that when you are older. To have to give up all that you hold dear and familiar is heartbreaking. You might say, "Just sell your home and go to an apartment," but they are all very expensive, or one of the very, very expensive senior living facilities. It sounds good, but what do you do when your money's gone? Stand on the street corner with a tin cup? I don't want to be melodramatic, but this kind of thing is scary. I have been told by some people that I am just wasting my time speaking here tonight and that nothing will come of it. I really don't believe that. You people on the school board are residents too, some for quite some time. I just can't believe that you were not at East... I just can't believe that you would not at least try to ease up burden, if only a little. Someday you will be in the same situation that we are now. I would hope and pray that you would give the same help that you could extend to us now. Please at least consider this carefully. There must be some way out of this problem. After all, we are all residents of our great and beloved Aston Townshend. Thank you for your time.
At least I got a comment.
Sure.
Thank you.
Here's Connes.
I'd like to inquire about a survey that was given to my son. He's in sixth grade. He's eleven years old. I was asking about his sexual preference, whether he liked boys or girls. Can someone explain this to me?
Sure. I'm aware of the survey or aware of the concerns?
I'm not. Nobody told me about it. Why wasn't I informed? I'm actually really, really mad about it, to be honest with you, very upset.
I can address it in a second. Any other comments?
I got more, yeah.
Okay, let me let you speak and then I'll respond. Go ahead.
Well, first off, I feel it's an invasion of my family's privacy to ask my son, who's eleven years old, who doesn't really know anything about sexuality yet, whether if he likes boys or he likes girls, because he's the youngest in his class. So he came home to me confused about the survey. I found out on Facebook. I don't really feel that's an appropriate place for me to find out about something like this. This is a very touchy subject. I feel that it's not the school's place to poke and prod about my kid's sexuality at eleven years old. It's ridiculous. I don't know if it's the school board, the state. I know nothing. I'm the parent. I'm just like her, paying taxes so this whole thing runs, right? I'm just deeply upset that my son came home confused, and that also too, that I don't understand where the, how this is educational, how this has anything to do with how, I mean, I want to raise my child the way I want to raise them, and I teach them a certain way about sexuality. I don't feel it's the school board's place or the school to poke and prod. Quite frankly, I just had, we had a meeting at work about sexual harassment, where they said to me that if I ask somebody about their sexuality, or I say something about gay or this or that, I can be fired. I can be fired for that and lose everything. I don't understand where the school gets off asking my child these questions. I'm done. And the other thing that I just want to say is, if we're going to have more of these surveys, I'd like to know so my kid can opt out of it, if they can. I don't know what their strong arm is doing. I don't know nothing.
Okay. Thank you. And could you give your name so we can get this on the record? I can also contact you. My phone will record it right now.
Dell Samoony.
Okay, and address, please? Thank you. Agnes, could I have your address too so we can get on the record? Okay, thank you very much. Let's give the mic to Ms. Palmerini.
So with regards to the question about the survey, the survey was a question that was part of the survey that's done by a company called YouthTruthSurvey.org. You're welcome to go online to see that company that does that survey. They've done the survey in about thirty-nine states. They surveyed about 1.1 million students. We've used that school climate survey here at Northlake for about six or seven years. The question that you're asking was a new question that was in the survey this year that I was not aware was in the survey. I agree with you that middle school students should not be asked a question about their sexual orientation. The question said, "How do you identify as a student?" It said, "Prefer not to answer, I don't know, straight, or gay or lesbian." Regardless of the options, it's not a question that we support. The question was added to that national survey because in some states, they want to be able to disaggregate whether or not students of certain orientations are bullied at greater rates than other students. But I agree with you wholeheartedly that it's a very difficult question and an unnecessary question for a middle school student to ask, to answer. And we're sorry that it made some kids feel uncomfortable. All I can do is apologize, and I can tell you that we've already conveyed to that company that if we do that survey again next year, that we want that question removed. I'm not certain that we will use Youth Truth Survey next year. We may do our own. The board members have raised some concerns as well, and I agree with that. So before we do any student surveys next year, the things that we will do is certainly convey to them as representatives of the community, first of all, the survey questions if we have access to them, and then there should be that option for parents to choose to opt their students out, even though the survey is anonymous and only produces school-level data. So we use it to try to track how students feel, right? So we want them to be able to answer anonymously, did they feel safe at school? Where did they feel comfortable? But that question that they were asked is one that I wish wasn't asked, and all I can tell you is that in the future, it won't be part of the survey at the middle school. Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number 11 is Items for Board Action. Starts on page two, follows through on page three, four, five, and concludes on the top of page six. References to Pendelco Budget 2018-2019, Pendelco Budget 2019-2020, Act 93 Plans, PDEA Agreement, PDESPA Agreement, PDSSPA Agreement, PA School Code Section 1108B. It is administrative recommendation to approve all personnel items as presented. Do I have this motion? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Tonight the board utilizing consent agenda for 11.03 through 11.18. Is there any board member who wishes to have any agenda item removed and voted on separately? If not, I need a motion to approve 11.03 through 11.18. Note, all contracts, preparations, and solicitation of bids are subject to an approval of this list. Do I have this motion? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Number 12, we have one last section for comments. Comments by members of the board? I would like to add, several else up here on stage do have students in the middle school. We were not aware of the questions, as Dr. Steinbach said. We were aware that evening last week after we met in our board meeting. We will take a stronger action on going over our surveys before they're given to our children. Once again, as Dr. Steinbach said, this is the sixth or seventh year we've given this, and they decided to change a, one question on the survey, and shame on us for not picking it out before it was given to the kids. So we apologize for that. Anyone else?
I just would like to recognize our senior resident that took the time to come tonight. Sorry. I would like to recognize our senior resident that took the time to come tonight. I apologize that things are so hard, and hopefully somewhere, someday, not in the future, things
Future meetings, our next study session meeting is Wednesday, June 19th, Service Center at 7:30. Our next business meeting is June 26th at the Service Center also at 7:30. Please note that graduation will be June 11th. Newman University, the sixth? Oh, I'm sorry, six o'clock. Mr. Sassy was saying six, I was like, hold on, it was the 11th. You will need a ticket to attend, so if you plan on attendance, you will need to contact a student or the school to see if the tickets are available. Motion for adjournment.